I would like to call the September Coleson City School Board meeting to order. I'd also like to apologize, somehow our service for live broadcast got dropped and it just got up and running, so thank everybody in the IT room for your work and diligence in getting us up and running. I would like to start with the pledge to the flag that will be led by Jamie Steigerwald, a senior at Coleson High School.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Do you have any additions or modifications to the agenda?
No, sir. We do not. Jamie's going to bring the inspirational lead.
Take it away, Jamie.
I'm sure I'm not alone when I say that if you told me a year ago today we would be in the midst of a global pandemic, I would look at you and I would laugh. Last year at this time, I was playing volleyball. I was worrying about who would ask me to the homecoming dance. I was rushing from shift to shift after my 5:00 PM practices and staying up until midnight to get Mrs. Morrison's dreadful hotspots done. Now, instead of worrying about my date to a dance, I am worried that I could get myself or my family deathly ill. I fear we may not have a senior year at all. One thing, however, is guaranteed. My generation is the generation of resilience. Last Friday, the senior class SCA organized a socially-distanced senior picnic in order to be able to see and somewhat socialize with those we have not been able to see in months. Seeing the smile in people's eyes behind the mask and witnessing the people who typically don't mingle with each other wave at each other from afar was the most rewarding feeling. That's the thing about the class of 2021. We come together. We're all united under the fact that this is our last year in the Vicosin School District. Most of us being here for our whole academic career, it's a very, very bittersweet feeling, and we're gonna do the best to make, we're gonna make it the best despite the odds. It's just a matter of time before we all go our own way, and it is our job to ensure every senior in the graduating class of 2021 will look back and not only say, "I did it," but we will be able to realize that together, we beat the pandemic. Maybe not literally, but we were able to come together. We smiled at each other on Google Meet, and most importantly, we've created a bond like any other class. So, yes, I would not have believed you a year ago if you were to tell me that we would be in the midst of a pandemic, but when you told me that together we were stronger than it, I for sure would.
Thank you. The recognition is out. Over to Ms. Sheeler.
I have the pleasure of telling you a little bit about Jamie Steigerwald as a senior at the high school who has served the Vicosin School Board as the Vicosin School Board representative for the past year. Jamie gives her time and energy to continuously helping those around her to improve conditions for all students. Throughout her time at Vicosin High School, she has worked with the administration to make our school one where all students feel comfortable coming to learn. She was selected to serve on the principal's advisory committee, serve as the class president for all four years, was selected to represent Vicosin High School in a focus group on student encouragement, and a host of other meaningful activities. Additionally, she works to mobilize the school community to register to vote through the Inspire Virginia program. Through the student-to-student, National Honor Society, and Key Club, Jamie volunteers time to tutor her peers and assist local civic organizations. When it comes to academics, Jamie continues to push herself through a challenging course load, earning grades in the top tier of her class. However, it's not about the grades for Jamie, as she has a passion for learning which supersedes a desire to excel in all subjects. Jamie views learning and education as a means for helping people to understand the world around them. She actively works to share her love of learning with others through volunteer work and has also earned state recognition through her work with our DECA club and as a participant in the Tidewater Regional Science Fair. She competes as a standout varsity athlete on the Vicosin High School volleyball team, which I'm sure she would really like to be doing right now. She took the team to the Class II State Championships for the second year in a row, and volunteers to assist with numerous other athletic teams as a manager. Most notably, Jamie goes out of her way to bring a smile to those around her by offering a kind word, a hug, I've gotten one of those, they're really good, or learning, or leaving an encouraging note. As an example, during a recent closure of schools, Jamie anonymously left care packages on the doorsteps of her classmates to bring a smile during social isolation. This is the type of kindness she displays regularly. After graduation from Vicosin High School, Jamie plans to study business and marketing at either George Mason or Christopher Newport University.
We were very blessed to have her serve with us last year, so we really appreciate your work and your diligence, and thank you to the parents as well. Next up is presentations and reports, and we'll start with school opening update. Mr. Tillot.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's a pleasure to share this presentation, but I can't take the credit. We have an incredible team of folks, and I say this every time I get an opportunity. I've said it throughout the community, and I've said it since I hit the ground in Vicosin. This is a small but mighty team that does everything around here, and so the opening of school would not be possible if not for the hard work and dedication of this amazing group of educators, the patience of families. I arrived July 1st, and we built a plant from the ground up that I would say is as good as any in the state. We have young people, our little fellows are in school today, and we're one of the few divisions around that's been able to accomplish that, and we've done it safely, and we're proud of that. My hat's off to our principals, who worked tirelessly to make this happen, the central leadership team, and right down to our students who have been, again, patient with us. We've had some technical glitches, as you've seen tonight, maybe this was just a demonstration. Some of the things that our young folks have battled with in the last few days, through it all, we have opened schools successfully, and we will continue. We're gonna talk in a few minutes about the next steps, but we have for you tonight just a 10-minute little, just a snapshot of some of the exciting things that happened, starting on September the 8th, as our young folks started school. This presentation was built tonight by our newest leadership team member, Emily Forrest, and Emily's back here in the back, and I want to thank her for her hard work. And so here we are, just a small glimpse into the opening of Vicosin City Public Schools.
It's been a great start to the school year. I want to thank all the many staff members, students, and community members for all rallies made this year spectacular, even with the challenges of COVID. We've got large numbers of students working virtually online as well. We have our K3 students, several students with special needs back in class on hybrid schedule, and we're working very...
There it is. Take two. Does this happen in Hollywood?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Just like Hollywood.
Yes, huh?
Can you go to your presentation first? Play that first.
We're gonna go to the next presentation. the opening of schools, we had a four-hour work session, if you will recall. It wasn't the record, I understand that Virginia Beach beat us and had about a seven-hour work session, but... So, we have reported on this data that has driven our decisions throughout this process to make sure that we're always keeping in the forefront the health and safety of our students and staff. So, tonight, we're gonna update you on some of the same slides you've seen for three or four meetings now with updated information, hot off the press. And this slide should be familiar to you now. This is just cases of COVID in Vicosin and on the peninsula and the Hampton Health District, because, of course, those are not only areas where our folks travel, but we have about half of our staff members live and work, excuse me, outside of Vicosin and in these areas around the peninsula. I want to draw your attention to the bottom line there, percent positivity. That's an important number we've learned from the health professionals, and that's a measure that we have watched daily, and you'll hear more about that number in a minute, but that is a very important part of our decision-making as we monitor percent positivity rates. These are just per 100,000 cases, so these are just sheer numbers per 100,000, and again, we're looking at not only Vicosin but the area around us, because that's where our folks live and work. The Peninsula Health District, of course, is made up of Hampton, James City Council, I mean County, Newport News, Vicosin, Williamsburg, and York County, and these are the five considerations that we've heard from them over and over again. We meet as the area superintendents on a Thursday conference call at 3:00 every week and review the data from this week, from each week, and these are the things that we look at to kind of drive this. And if you'll notice that second bullet, it's very important, because the case burden, we've been advised, should be decreasing for at least two weeks when we start looking at moving into the next phase of our opening of school. And the case positivity rate, again, the Virginia Health Department has advised it should be less than 10%. The case positivity rate, according to the World Health Organization, should be around 5%, and the CDC, of course, recommends as low as achievable. So, this, these are numbers hot off the press as of yesterday, and you'll notice that the peninsula, our case burden has dropped to 7.0 per 100,000, and it's been decreasing for two full weeks. The mean case positivity rate on the peninsula as of yesterday is 5.6 and also has been decreasing for two weeks. You've noticed the numbers underneath, just a week ago, we were at 6.6, and then on August the 27th, we were at 7.0. These numbers have continued to drop, and that's good news. There have been two, there have been cases of COVID identified in two local private schools that we're monitoring very closely, because those are the things that we're watching for around the region, and as you know, many of our private schools around the area started school right before us or about the same time we did. This is a slide I've been waiting to see. This number had, if you'll remember, as we've shared it multiple times over the last 30 days, had a lot of red and then some orange and then yellow, and that is like a stoplight. The red is not good. The yellow or orange is an area that we could, we should proceed cautiously, and then the green is much safer environment. Not safe completely, because there is no such thing as perfect safety in the time of a pandemic, but it is certainly a time that school divisions should be looking at plans to get kids back in school. You'll notice the trip, I won't read it to you, but you can see the trend data from the 27th of August, when we reported on this to you in the 2nd of October, and then again last week, and you see these numbers continually dropping in both the case burden or transmission rate per 100,000, as well as the positivity rate, which is now identified as low and decreasing, and has been decreasing for about 19 days. One of the dynamics that we have been watching for, part of the Peninsula Health District's advice is to encourage increased testing, because the positivity rate is based on not just the positive test, because oftentimes people only go get a test when they're sick, and so that would change the positivity rate. So, we've been encouraged to have more testing in the city of Vicosin. Seventy-six actual cases, one death in Vicosin as of today. These are the things, the, every presentation, we've been, we've been asked by the Peninsula Health District to, in all of our presentations, to advise these six bullet points to encourage folks to keep it up. These things seem to be working, the mask, hand washing, and distancing, and limiting crowds. The flu season is upon us, so the Health Department is certainly recommending flu shots during this time, and also, there is a new app that's out there that we'll provide more information on as we get it, that allows folks to monitor their whereabouts in the community based on cases of COVID, which is kind of an exciting tool that we will certainly share as we get more information from the Peninsula Health Division. So, let's talk now about next steps for Vicosin City Public Schools. These are the things that we need to start doing right away, and we have already started the conversations for this next move, and there's some work to be done. As you know, moving this ship in this direction takes some time and planning, so it won't happen this week or next week, but in the very short, near future, we will be transitioning our 4th and 5th graders back to school in, on a hybrid plan. These are things that our team will start working on immediately. We will have to revisit individual education plans with our student, for our students with special needs, to transition from a virtual model to a hybrid model. We, of course, have to work with transportation on bus routes. We'll be sending that out, maybe as soon as tomorrow, information for families to sign up for bus transportation, and still, I want to remind folks that the requirements for transporting students on buses require us to social distance, and that limits the amount of students who we can transport on each bus, so we have to be cognizant of that as we plan these things, and we'll be looking at routes and pickup areas and drop-off areas as well. In addition, we have to adjust the parent drop-off and pickup lines. We certainly don't want to send our parents out on Odd Road or Vicosin Avenue if we, if we can avoid it, so we have to monitor our transportation for parent drop-off and pickup. Food service preparation, we've got to prepare for that. We'll continue our daily health screenings, adding these two additional groups. As you know, the company we contracted with, Revna, we launched on Monday, and it was a great success. We had, I think it's somewhere around 93% or 94% of our families were able to log on easily and provide that information in real time to our administrators, so they, the health screening was done, and we knew, as the kids were arriving, that they were safe to come to school, and of course, we continue with temperature checks, trying to make sure we're doing everything possible to keep kids safe while in our care. And then, of course, we're gonna need some lead time for families to plan, maybe some change in their childcare arrangements, that we probably gonna need at least a week's time of notice for folks to make those decisions and plans as we transition 4th and 5th graders back. So, those are the things we are already starting to plan for, and so the exciting news is Vicosin City Public Schools will be now transitioning in the next few weeks, our 4th and 5th graders back to school. We're excited about this. It's something we have said from the beginning. We think kids are better in school. We applaud the teachers and families for the hard work to deliver virtual instruction as well and make that a viable choice for families, and that is up and running, and there are some technological bugs that we have been working through. Many of those are not under our control, and I'll share at the end of our meeting tonight in our comments, just a few bullet points related to the technology, because we still have about 35% of our families who have chosen for their children Vicosin online, which, again, is, we believe, is a great opportunity for families who are not ready to transition back to school. So, that is exciting news, hot off the press, and it's nice to lead, and I've said before, it's good to be on the leading edge. You don't want to be on the bleeding edge, so we want to be out front, but we want to do it safely, and I am hearing around the region that other school divisions are starting to have these conversations, very serious conversations, and I would not be surprised if we don't start to see area, with these numbers, area, school divisions, perhaps moving in this direction a little faster than first quarter, which many of them had originally decided. So, that's my report as relate to health and next steps, and I'm available for questions, and are we ready? Okay. Any questions related to this report?
Yes, sir, Mr. Holton. What was the response to the two positive cases on the peninsula and the schools? Did they just shut things down?
They did not. We, and we don't have all the details, but they were, they reported that they were isolated cases and the schools were not closed, but what we don't know, because it wasn't in the report, I read this in the media, was whether they closed down a classroom or a group of children. The process, as you know, and we've reported on this, becomes a lead by the Peninsula Health Division when there's a reported case. So, they take charge, and then they decide, is this an isolated case that can affect just a family or a group of children, or a classroom of children, or a grade level of children, or in some cases, the whole school? The goal always being to mitigate the case and keep it from spread. So, in those cases, they work directly with the Peninsula Health Division. Now, this information that there were cases at two different schools was shared with us directly from the Peninsula Health Department last Thursday in our conference call.
And this one, you might not know, do you have an idea about the 4th and 5th transition in October 1, 15, 30?
It'll be early October. What we don't want to do is set a date, only because we've got to do those things first, and we want to get those things at least close enough to when we know a definitive date that that's finished, and then let families know, this is the date, so you can plan for it. So, I'm gonna just say, we're pretty confident we can do it by early October. Now, whether that's the 5th of October or the 12th, I'm not sure. I can't see it being longer than that. Now, we'll report, as usual, you'll get a Thursday or Friday email from me with our progress, so we'll keep you completely up to date as we make progress toward this end, and then, again, we want to get this out to our families as quickly as possible, so they can make necessary arrangements.
Thank you. I know that there's no way that board members can ask all the questions that, obviously, running through people's minds who may be watching, but I would encourage the public to contact members at school office with questions, and they are very good about responding and getting back. So, any questions the public has about any of the presentations that you hear, please contact staff.
Absolutely, and I'll reiterate that, Mr. Chairman, we, as you know, have Let's Talk, which is an open communication tool for all families to communicate with us on the regular, and we will respond immediately, get information, and when we start to see a trend of questions, two or three families asking the same question, we will post it, continue to post it on our website under our Frequently Asked Questions. It's right on the tab under School Reopening, and you'll find that growing list of Frequently Asked Questions. There are maybe 50, 60 on there now, and it grows every few days. So, when we hear a question asked by two or three folks, that's something on the mind of our constituents, and we want to put it on the Frequently Asked Questions. So, I'd encourage you to keep checking that if you do have questions.
Mr. Tillot, can you speak on, because I'm sure there's some parents of middle-school and high-school age students tonight that are potentially watching the meeting, and if they're looking at some of those numbers being as low as they are, having dropped over the course of the past couple of weeks, you know, while it's certainly beneficial for us to get our 4th and 5th graders back into the building, I'm sure there's gonna be concern from some middle-school and high-school parents about, well, when, you know, when can we expect our kids back in the building? Can you kind of touch on that, and maybe?
Absolutely, yeah, and that's a great question, Mr. Jordan. We have the same goal, and that is, we want to get our middle and high-school kids back in school as soon as possible. The challenges for secondary students in scheduling and staffing are much different than they are for K5. And as you'll recall, as we reported out throughout this process, we knew that those were going to be the most daunting task of trying to schedule subject-specific courses and students taking those courses, because, and we mentioned just some very simple anecdotal challenges we have, the English teacher can't teach science, whereas in our K5, a K5 teacher teaches all of our core subjects, and so when we're planning for subject-specific instruction, the scheduling piece is going to be a tangled web. Now, we're networking with all of the peninsula school divisions who are, all of them have a significantly larger staff than we do to work on these challenges, and they are working diligently as we are in preparation for how will we bring secondary students in yet. So far, we haven't stumbled on a plan collectively that will achieve that yet because of the staffing and scheduling constraints. You'll also remember that when we reported out to our board, there were about 22 or 23 staff members on our employee that were unable to return to work and were able to take advantage of the available leave options related to their age or pre-existing condition, and those folks may not be available to teach in person during COVID. So, those numbers in a large division may be able to be overcome, 20-plus employees, but in a division with 155 teachers, 22, 23 teachers take us out of the game, quite honestly. So, staffing, scheduling are going to be our most significant challenges in moving 6 through 12 back in the building with the social distancing requirement while COVID is still haunting. COVID is still, um, haunting us. But, um, we are going to keep working on it. Um, we'll keep reporting out, but I'm glad you brought that question up because I know that's going to be, uh, the burning question, um, on, on the minds of our, uh, families of secondary students. When can we get those kids back? And we're working on it. That's the only thing I can say, but the challenges are much more significant in that area. And I will say that of the teachers who have those, um, who qualify for those leave, uh, areas of leave, they are predominantly secondary teachers. The very small number of our primary teachers and elementary teachers who, uh, have expressed any concerns or qualification for those leave balances. Any other questions? All right. We ready? The opening of school, two thousand twenty.
Here, um, spectacular.
No, we're still having sound issues. We might need to move on to the next presentation while we figure that piece out. We're still having sound issues. Can we do the other presentation?
Sure. Let's go with, uh, financial update with Ms. Woodruff.
We did open school, I promise.
[laughing]
Good evening, Chairman Carter and members of the school board. For the finance report this evening, I wanted to thank the City of Pecoson Fire Department for providing us with hand sanitizer and masks. They received PPE from the Virginia Department of Emergency Management and they shared this with the schools. Um, the audit work is ongoing. The auditors were on site today and will continue their field work through the end of September. I expect the auditors to issue a report by November, and I plan to present that to you in the December board meeting. Finance staff are also finan- finalizing work on the annual school finance report that is due to the state in September. That concludes my report.
Thank you, ma'am. Next up, operations update with Mr. Papas.
Good evening, school board. Chairman Carter, Mr. Tillot. Um, normally I just give you my rundown of some operations things, but I got to tell you, today, when Jamie Steigerwall talked about how the class of two thousand twenty has come together, it was pretty moving for me because for thirteen years, I've had to do my thing, get in my boat and row to make school open in my world. This year already shows up and, and Hussein Bolt couldn't have run any faster than the Pecoson team. So I used to just row my boat and I'd look over and see what IT was doing, principals were doing, and really didn't pay too much attention. But Ashley, Tara, Principal Syak, Principal Kim. Unbelievable. IT, food service, transportation staff, custodial staff, and, uh, Melissa, and unquestionably, Antonia. Late night phone calls. People working together to make the other person's department work. It was a battle. It was a war. I'd go into battle with you guys anytime. So thanks. Um, food service has been great. The USDA on August thirty-first decided to extend the summer food service program until December thirty-first, which allows all children in our division and actually children one year old and older and any students who, um, are still enrolled in school up to the age of twenty-one to eat for free. Um, and we are delivering, actually, I'm sorry, we're delivering meals in a sense, but parents are coming to pick up meals at the primary school. And, um, thank you, Emily, for all your hard work to get that word out there. And the first time we did it Thursday, food service served two hundred and fifty individual students, um, and it was like eighteen hundred meals. Incredible. That was from five to six-thirty. And then yesterday, they served two hundred and eighty-two individual students, um, and it's, it's grown, and we're going to see where it goes from there. Transportation, as you know, we got little stickers on the seats and that keeps the kids apart. First day of school was as charming as ever. And it truly was, they were, they seemed so tall. Even though they're this tall, they were upright and proud to be coming to school. We're spraying between every run. Our staff is doing a great job. And then, uh, parents have been wonderful with the parent pickup. You know, Kim was on the phone with me and we're trying to figure out, how are we going to do this? How are we going to have enough time? And here it is, Sunday nights and conference calls. And, uh, we said, parents just going to have to change the way they come and pick people up. Can't do it. Oh my goodness, is that going to work? Hats off to parents. They've really assisted us in making that happen. And then, uh, other than that, it's been a good opening for operations. Thank you.
Papas, thank you. Uh, Dr. Fox with the instructional update.
Good evening, Chairman Carter, Vice Chair Sheeler, board members, and Mr. Tillot. Um, tonight I'm going to share some information related to our school accreditation and just a quick update as we do every year on some of our grants that we have. And thank you, Steve, for your kind words. You have been the glue that's held us all together, so thank you for everything you've done. So, um, accreditation, I know that this is something everybody's been wondering about because we didn't have testing last year, but with the approval of the Secretary of Education, um, the Superintendent of Public Instruction has waived the accreditation for each public school for the two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-two school year based on data from this school year, so that's next school year. It'll be noted, um, on our school report card as accreditation waived. So this is the same rating that's in place for this school year, um, based on last year's lack of school data from testing. Um, so you'll see on this year's report card, it will also say accreditation waived. What has not been waived at this point, um, are the requirements for standardized testing for the current school year. Um, so we're not sure where that's going to go. Obviously, we're planning our instruction that we have students to be prepared for those assessments, but we're hoping that there'll be some kind of waiver coming from the U.S. Department of Ed or from the state, um, level, but we don't have that information at this time. Um, if you recall, we have, we had three grants running. We currently now have two. Our STEM grant sadly finished its fifth year this summer. All of those funds have been allocated, but that work will still continue as we will be still doing things in the areas of science, um, technology, engineering, and mathematics to integrate those across the content area. So even though that grant funding has ended the work and the sustaining work of that will not end. We have two other grants that are currently running. We have our PBL Project-Based Learning Grant, which is in year five of five, if you can believe that. That's a five hundred thousand dollar grant. And we have our Tiered System of Support, which is in year three of five. That's also a five hundred thousand dollar grant. So those are continuing. That work is being done in the virtual and in the person world as we speak. We also wanted to share with you that we're hoping, fingers are crossed, we're very optimistic that sometime at the end of this month, we should find out about another grant that we submitted in April of two thousand twenty with DoDIA. This is a seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant in the area of STEAM. So it's still science, technology, engineering, and math, but it adds the arts component. And we wrote it to include social, emotional learning as well. So cross your fingers that we hear good news in a couple of weeks about that one. And then we do want to share this with you. This is some good news that Mr. Tillot just got on Tuesday. Um, we also applied for this grant in April of two thousand twenty, and we just received notification that we are a Division of Innovation Grant winner, um, from the State Superintendent of Public Education again. Um, and he is recommending that we receive this grant. It'll be approved later this weekend at their state board meeting. It's a two-year, one hundred thousand dollar grant, um, with year one, which would be this school year, fifty thousand dollars, and next year, fifty thousand dollars for the actual implementation. And this will be to create an interdisciplinary American Studies course that combines U.S. history in grade eleven and English eleven into one core course that teaches it based on thematic units rather than separate individual units. So we're very excited about this opportunity for some of our students in high school to give them a taste of combining English and history together. Um, and that concludes my report this evening.
Hey, I just want to say, as somebody that's helped write grants, my hats off to all of you all for doing that in the middle of the, you know, the beginning of the pandemic. Great job on the new award and fingers crossed for the, for the ones. That's, that's phenomenal.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. And, uh, public comment, Ms. Reimers?
Yes, do you have a public comment?
Uh, Dr. Tinsley? Is that correct?
Thank you, Dr. Tinsley. And, um, we ask that you limit your comments to three minutes, and please note that, uh, our protocol is to not respond to the comments during the meetings.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. So yeah, I'm here as a, a doctor, but I'm also here as a father. I've got kids in school as well. Um, you answered some of my questions earlier with, uh, with Doc, so you did address some important data with the case count. Um, some of the data that's not addressed, though, is the hospitalizations. Um, case count's important, um, but when you look at hospitalizations, it's inversely proportional to the case count. That means it's flip-flopped. Okay, so people are getting sick with the demo- but you look at the demographics, they're not getting hospitalized. So the younger you are, the more people are getting sick. The older you are, the more people are getting hospitalized. So if you're young and you get sick, you usually don't get hospitalized. If you're older and you get sick, you usually get hospitalized. Does that make sense? And we've got the data from the Virginia Department of Health showing that it's the exact opposite. So what I was wondering is was why, I mean, why aren't you opening the schools, but you are opening some of the younger schools? Why aren't we opening them all at the same time? Seems like the older kids would, if you're going to get COVID, the older kids have a higher survivability rate because they have larger airways. Why not the older schools first and the younger schools first? Anyway, that's, I'll keep it brief because you answer a lot. And I know, I, I don't get to see the big picture like you guys. I'm just looking at it from the outside. Um, those are just my observations. Um, the kids, uh, don't die usually. Um, if they have some serious health issues, they should definitely stay home, like cystic fibrosis, asthma, things like that. The teachers that have comorbidities, uh, uncontrolled diabetes, high blood pressure, COPD, things like that, they should stay home. But the, the twenty-three teachers, you know, maybe they could teach from home with, uh, with the laptops like they're doing now. The kids can bring their laptops to school. And the teachers that are teach, that can teach, teach from school. Everybody else bring their laptops, sit in the classroom, and have the teachers that can't come to school, teach from home, and leave their laptops in class. That's all I got. Thank you very much, guys.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Have an additional?
Yes, sir. Do you have Ms. Lisa Saba?
I have no notes. I wasn't really prepared for this, um, but I guess since nobody else is going to say anything from a parent's perspective, um, I don't have little ones anymore. Mine are high school and eighth grade. And, um, they're very independent learners, um, straight A students usually. Um, it's been a big challenge, huge. And I work three days a week, um, out of the home. My husband is home most of the time working. He works for the graveyard, but he's working from home. But they come to him and he gives him the sign, I'm on a conference call, you know, um, but he can see him, you know, struggling. Um, my high schooler is on our MacBook and she seems to be doing pretty well. Um, eighth grader is on the issued Chromebook. I don't know what the issue is because I'm not a tech person, but he is constantly losing internet, constantly, 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 to the point where, um, he probably wouldn't want this televised, but, I mean, tears, you know, and he's just not, he's not that kid, but he is a straight A kid. And I said to him the other day, I said, honey, why, I didn't say honey, but, um, why did you get a ninety-one on this assignment? What was that? Not that you're in trouble, but just tell me, what was it? What did you miss? And he said, I don't know. I am just trying to not get Fs right now because my teachers don't know that I'm in class. And, um, if I'm not in class, I can't do the work. And they think I'm not there, and they don't know why I'm not there. I don't even know who they are, some of them. And, um, I'm sorry to get emotional, but I just want these kids in school and I want them to learn and I want them to know that they can do it. They're an independent learner. I've seen him do it the last eight years of his life and get stronger and smarter every year, and he's not doing it. And I don't know what to do. I just spent three hundred dollars today at Best Buy trying to improve our internet, and I live right off of With Creek Road, right behind the fire station. I don't know why it's not working. I spent three hours on hold with Verizon and I got nowhere and nobody came. I had to hang up because I was at work. And I don't know what to do and we don't know what to do. And I know I'm not alone. I know it. I know it. I know it. And that's the only reason why, even though I didn't want to speak, that's why I'm speaking. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, and you're always welcome to, to speak, and that goes to anybody, and that's why we have that, that time carved out. So I appreciate you taking the time, uh, both of you, out and to, uh, have the courage to get up and address the board. So thank you all very much. Um, Ms. Sheeler, would you like to walk us through the consent agenda, please?
Yes, the consent agenda includes the approval of minutes of the August regular meeting, the approval of the financial reports, the approval of personnel action, and the authorization to change appropriation and to accept and expend funds in accordance with, uh, the request.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve?
I'm moved.
And a second? Second. Uh, Ms. Reimers?
Mr. Freeman?
Aye.
Mr. Ingraham?
Aye.
Mr. Jordan?
Aye.
Mr. Holcomb?
Aye. I'll have to abstain on the, uh, August meeting. I was not here, but I, as, as.
Ms. Hessel?
Aye.
Um, Vice Chair Sheeler?
Aye.
Chairman Carter?
Aye.
Question, passage six, one abstention.
Thank you. And other matters for consideration, first up is consideration of the crisis plan amendment. Uh, Mr. Tillot, would you like to speak to that briefly, please, sir?
Sure, Mr. Chairman. Um, this is, um, not unusual. You, uh, have all seen the, uh, crisis plan each year as you are required to approve it. Um, and I know you have copies of that plan, and it is a, a living document in that it changes as, um, crises present themselves, and the pandemic is the new crisis. And so there's a section in our, um, handbook that was, um, started in February of last year as the pandemic, um, started to, uh, move. And, um, it was completed over the summer and added to our, our crisis plan officially for your approval tonight. And you'll notice in your packet that it's pretty boilerplate. The kinds of things are in there are things that have been recommended from the, uh, CDC, the, um, Virgin, Virginia Department of Health, as well as the Department of Ed, Department of Education. As well, um, we are required to, uh, add to our plan a, an addendum that is approved or reviewed by, I should say, the Virginia Department of Health. Um, and that is our phase three, um, uh, document that we have just, uh, gotten reviewed. And so we have added that as the second part, as an addendum to our pandemic plan in our crisis plan. So, um, we are available for questions. Um, I think most of that information we've covered throughout these presentations, um, pretty thoroughly, the kinds of information that we look at, the extraordinary mitigation strategies that we have in our, uh, buildings from spraying to, um, temperature checks, all of All of that is here in great detail. But again, we'd be happy to entertain any questions you have, but we recommend approval tonight so that our plan will be official.
Thank you, sir. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Any questions?
Is this a first reading or are we approving this as an addition?
This is an addendum, yes.
This is not first reading. This is a addition, is it tonight?
Yeah, this is in that amendment, yeah. Anybody else? Ms. Reimers, could you call for a vote, please?
Mr. Freeman?
Aye.
Mr. Ingram?
Aye.
Mr. Jordan?
Aye.
Mr. Holcomb? Ms. Hessel?
Aye.
Vice Chair Sheeley?
Aye.
Chairman Carter?
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero.
Thank you. Next up is approval of the calendar amendment. Mr. Tillot?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. We, of course, have a, an annual calendar that we, we create a two-year cycle for in conjunction with the Peninsula School Divisions because we share the New Horizon Program. And we plan our vacation times collectively. So that, that, you all approve those, those calendars in advance, but we are asking tonight to make a few slight addendums to those based on our reopening plan. And in the packet, you'll notice that Friday, October the 2nd, was designated as an early release day for homecoming. And for obvious reasons, we disappointingly will not be having homecoming on the 2nd of October. So we'd like to extend that to a full day to preserve additional instructional time. As well, the Friday, October the 9th, was designated for an early dismissal day for professional development. We're trying to keep those Fridays full days because now that we're on a hybrid schedule with our students and even additional students coming back, Friday is one of those precious two days a week that our hybrid students have with their teacher face-to-face. So we're trying to balance that as best we can and work around the already agreed-upon holidays that are built in the calendar. In additionally, we would like to move Tuesday, November 3rd to a, become a full day. And we would like to instead have Wednesday, November the 4th, and Wednesday, November the 11th designated as parent conference days. Because if you'll recall, Wednesday is our virtual day. So it's the logical time for us to have parent conferences and such, not taking away from direct face-to-face instruction that would happen on a Tuesday or a Friday. So those are the brief explanations for why we're requesting these four, five, excuse me, calendar changes. And it's just extending half-days to full-days and moving to Tuesdays to Wednesdays.
Do I have a motion to approve? Let's do a motion, a second then, yeah. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Ms. Hessel?
My question is, and this is probably for other parents that wonder, is how they know that it's going to be the parent-teacher conference? Am I correct in assuming the majority of it or all of those will be video-based conferences?
They are, yes. I failed to mention that. We are planning virtual conferences for the time being. We're hopeful that the day will come when we can get back face-to-face to our conferences and open houses and events. But right now, everything is virtual, but our teachers will be prepared for scheduled virtual conferences with parents. Very good point.
Sir?
I just probably cover, but in the event we do go back to full-on school before winter is over, are there any inclement weather?
Any.
Incliment weather days?
Yeah. They're not built. The good thing, and this is, you know, I was sharing with colleagues recently, there might be a few good things that come from these extraordinary measures we've had to take. And one of those is we do have a virtual option now. So inclement weather days can become virtual days. So we're hopeful that if we do have inclement weather, we quickly toggle to synchronous or asynchronous and/or asynchronous instruction and not lose those days either as instructional days or as counted 990 hours and 180 school days. They have been approved by the state board as official school days for obvious reasons. So they're not built in the calendar and we intend to, if we have inclement weather, let's hope we don't, but if we can make those virtual days and the learning continues. I'm sure the kids will be excited about that.
Anybody else? Thank you. Ms. Reimers, could you call?
Mr. Freeman?
Aye.
Mr. Ingram?
Aye.
Mr. Freeman?
Aye.
Mr. Holcomb?
Aye.
Ms. Hessel?
Aye.
Vice Chair Sheeley?
Aye.
Chairman Carter?
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero.
Thank you. Next up is consideration of approval of the forensic science textbook purchase. And we approved the course a while back and I guess they need a text. So that makes sense. Do I have a motion to approve adopting the forensic science textbook? And a second? Any questions there? Reimers? Freeman?
Mr. Freeman?
Aye.
Mr. Ingram?
Aye.
Mr. Jordan?
Aye.
Mr. Holcomb?
Aye.
Ms. Hessel?
Aye.
Vice Chair Sheeley?
Aye.
Chairman Carter?
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero.
And last item for consideration is approval of proclamations for both the National School Lunch Week and Bully Prevention Week. National School Lunch Week, Mr. Pappas just spoke to some of that a little bit earlier about how important it is. But it's, it is extremely important to get those kids food. And even research has shown that students who eat school meals perform their best academically. So there is a lot of benefit to making sure that our, our students are fed well. And then bully prevention, over 20% of the youth in the United States are estimated to be involved in bullying each year, either as a bully or a victim. And it can take on many forms, including verbal, physical, and most recently in cyberspace. And it can happen both at school and off-school grounds. And an estimate 160,000 students in kindergarten, 12th grade, miss school due to a fear of being bullied. So do I have a motion to approve those two proclamations?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Any questions, comments there? Ms. Reimers?
Mr. Freeman?
Aye.
Mr. Ingram?
Aye.
Mr. Jordan?
Aye.
Mr. Holcomb?
Aye.
Ms. Hessel?
Aye.
Vice Chair Sheeley?
Aye.
Chairman Carter?
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero.
Thank you. Next item is communications. And Mr. Tillot, pick it off. If you have any last items you'd like to go over with us.
I would, Mr. Chairman, if you'd allow me a few more minutes. And then we would love to show our video in conclusion that I think they've got up and running. But before we do that, I do want to just take a moment to talk a little bit about technology in that it's hot on everybody's mind, as you heard from our speaker tonight. And we've gotten a lot of feedback about technology. And I think it's important for us to realize that most students in the United States of America at this present moment is learning virtually. That number, I've tried to do a little research to see if I could get a concrete number about the, the numbers of virtual schools versus in, in-person instruction. But it, it's landing somewhere about 50% of, of the students in America, minimum, are studying both on the collegiate level and K-12 virtually. What that's done is created an infrastructure problem for not only local school districts and systems and divisions, but also the major carriers like Canvas and Google, Zoom, and these other companies that, whose infrastructure is not completely prepared for the business that they currently have. And a couple of ways that we're finding that out, in addition to reports that are coming in, especially in the last couple of weeks as schools have opened up around the country, is lag time, students being kicked off of networks. But just it's, it's important to, for our families to realize that Pic辛 City Public Schools upgraded last year to 2GB of bandwidth capacity. And at our highest peak so far, we're running around 800MB with significant additional capacity for our users. What is happening, and we're seeing these issues that, again, the parents spoke about tonight, and we have gotten much feedback about it, is kids are being kicked off of these platforms, namely Google and Canvas, because of a backend capacity on the part of those companies, whereas you, millions of users around the country are accessing these points at the same time, at generally the same time during the day and during the week. You probably get on all those places easily on Saturday morning, but on Tuesday morning, not so much. So we're, we're told they're working through those issues on their end. And of course, they have a lot more capacity to upgrade than, than, than we. But we have trouble shot all of our infrastructure and found our capacity to be capable of handling our needs efficiently. And that's as of today, the report we received. Just a few bullet points. We did distribute over 2,000 devices in a short period of time. 93% of those devices were distributed in a four-hour window on one day. I apologize to, want to do this on camera, to everyone who was backed up on Odd Road and Pic辛 Avenue in Florida. It was a challenge. We gave a four-hour window, but everybody came at 3:00. So if we had spread that out over four hours, we'd have been fine. So I apologize. Believe me, I've gotten plenty of feedback about, about that. It will not happen again. But we did accomplish our task. We got those devices in the hands of our students quickly. The remainder of those devices were delivered, were picked up by parents over the next couple of days or hand-delivered by our staff. The next thing I want to say is that these devices were individually touched by our very small but mighty staff to make sure they were tested and worked and, and connected to the internet. The screens were all working, the cameras were working. They were touched individually, all 2,000 of these devices, and were ready for use. Now, as you know, with a piece of technology, as we've seen tonight, it can be tested and then not work a few minutes later. So we're, we have worked through our help desk where we fielded over a short period of time, four days, 496 telephone calls and 432 emails. A staff of four individuals whom I want to publicly thank tonight, led by Kim Montalvo, who leads our ITRT team, as well as Scott Bumbau, Jennifer Canela, and Kelly Purdy, who's here tonight. These folks have done extraordinary work, nights, weekends, to make sure that our families have all the tech tools and access to working technology. And with that said, there's still challenges. And, but my hat's off to these people for their work. We couldn't do it without them. So thank you all for your very dedicated and diligent work in challenging times. In addition to that, I want to say thank you to Josh Montalvo, James Logan, Michael Thompson, and Steve Beinum, who have all done extraordinary work on the backend in preparing our school division through the technology infrastructure, network, technology systems, and all the non-instructional side of the technology to make sure that, that our system is working smoothly. And this stuff just doesn't happen. It's, it's because of a lot of hard work and my hat's off to them and I appreciate them very much. And the last thing I want to say is that we did launch Revna, as I mentioned earlier, and 94% of our families were able to log on. And we encourage folks to continue in the morning before school. And now we're going to bring 4th and 5th graders in. So we want to make sure folks are doing those health screenings, giving us truthful, honest information as we, as we move forward with more kids in, in the building. And there's a couple of more things I included in an update that I gave each of our board members individually. So if you have questions, I'm always available for that. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Um, do, do we want to do this now?
About 10 minutes? What do you think?
Go for it if it works. Yes, sir. And then we'll pick up with communications with Mr. Freeman.
Several students with special needs back in class on a hybrid schedule and are working very hard to transition additional students back to school as soon as possible. Again, thanks for a great start to a wonderful school year. Go Islanders.
To ensure students and families have what is needed for the beginning of the school year, each school held a materials distribution on September 2nd, 2020. Students received Chromebooks, iPads, schedules, earbuds, masks for those who are attending in person, and other school supplies. A lot of hard work and preparation went into making this successful and getting our students what they need. Open House is an event that takes place every year to familiarize students with their new classrooms and teachers. Although Open House was held virtually this year, our teachers did an amazing job of sharing the same information and making students feel just as welcome as they do in a typical in-person school year.
Hi, kindergarten boys and girls and welcome families. My name's Ms. Bullman and I'm so excited to be your kindergarten teacher this year. I've been at Pic辛 Primary School for eight years and I've taught kindergarten and first grade. So a little secret I'll let you in on is that kindergarten's the best. We have so much fun. We learn so many new things. You're going to change and grow so much during this school year. When you come to school next week, I know you might feel a little bit nervous. I still get nervous for the first day of school every year. So one of my favorite things to do is to read a story to you all on the first day of school called "The Kissing Hand." So this story is about a raccoon named Chester who's nervous to start school. And if you've ever read this story, you'll know why it's so special. It makes me so happy and I love sharing with all of you. Some other things we'll do are get to know each other, learn the expectations of being school, learn some of what are your favorite things, like what's your favorite color? What's your favorite food? Like, "I love pizza. I love spending time with my family, so I love to know about yours. I love reading books, so I want to know what your favorite book is. I love watching West Virginia football, so do you like watching any sports? There's so much we're going to learn about each other next week and throughout the school year and I cannot wait for you to join me. We're going to have so much fun. I hope you've had an amazing summer but are excited to start kindergarten. And we'll see you next week. Bye."
Hello, everyone. I want to quickly introduce myself. I'm Ms. Johnson. I'm the at-home hybrid teacher. So when you're not in school, you're going to be working with me. We're going to have so much fun together and I can't wait to meet you. And just know that I'm here for you in any way that you may need me. So please feel free to reach out to me if you have any questions or concerns and I will see you really, really soon, okay? So bye.
Welcome to a brand-new school year. My name is David Siegel and I'll be teaching 7th grade US History and 8th grade Civics and Economics. This is my fifth year at Pic辛 Middle School. This new year is going to have some challenges and new opportunities. Together, we can build a great learning environment, no matter the platform. I'm very excited to have you in my class and I'm sure you have lots of mixed emotions. I just want to reassure you that we will get through this by working together. Communication is super important in a virtual classroom, so it is super important that you and I communicate regularly. In our first week, I am going to be focusing on you. I want to get to know each and every one of them. I want you to know me as well, so we can build a positive work environment for everyone. Again, together, we can make this school year a very special one. I look forward to seeing everyone next week. If you have any questions now, please send me an email or call the office and ask for me.
Students and staff were welcomed to the first day of school with beautiful and uplifting messages to kick off school year 2020. Although morning procedures looked different at PPS and PES, students and staff transitioned seamlessly and the morning of the first day of school ran smoothly. Students maintained physical distancing, temp- Although morning procedures look different at PPS and PES, students and staff transitioned seamlessly, and the morning of the first day of school ran smoothly. Students maintained physical distancing, temperatures were checked, and health screenings were handled efficiently. Students and staff alike were so excited to get the day started.
Our reopening of schools plan allowed families to choose between the Continuum of Learning and Picocin Online. Currently, we have 350 students that are attending school in person, either two or four days a week. While in school, they are following guidelines set forth in our health plan. At this time, 1,756 of our students are attending school virtually. These are our students who elected Picocin Online, and also our students in grades 4 through 12 who elected the Continuum of Learning. However, all 2,106 of our students are accessing online material, when you consider that our students who attend in person also have virtual days. Our PCPS teachers have done an amazing job creating and delivering meaningful virtual instruction. Using the new Canvas learning management system, they are holding live classes and also providing independent learning activities in which they can provide students with feedback. Our teachers have jumped right into this new style of teaching and are doing everything they can for our students. I know teachers around the country are working extremely hard this school year, and here at PCPS, we clearly have the best teachers. The evidence is right here in the words of our students.
My favorite part today was making friends and also being with my class and being with my teacher.
Um, we read books and we were talking about math tools, and it was fun. I got to make a mouse and I named him Charlie, Charlie the Mouse.
Thank you for the first day of school.
My name's Chris Snow, I'm on my first day of school today. Um, I kind of sat in the beginning, but then I started to know some new kids and I did some work, and I really liked it.
It was fun when my teacher gave me a tour so I knew where everything is when needed, and I liked when we did give noodles to get our wiggles out, and I liked when she got us coloring, she used to color for those funny colors, and I liked seeing all my friends back in middle school. It was good because my teacher got to see me on live meets on Google Meets, and she got to see me, so if I needed any questions, she could answer me instead of me having to email back and forth with my parents.
My favorite part of today is Google Meet, because I get to see my friends and my teacher, my special ed teacher. I get to see all my best friends, everyone that I know, even get to see people I don't know.
Hi, my name is Emily, I'm in 5th grade, and my favorite part about today was getting to meet all my new classmates.
Hi, my name is Thomas Brundick, I am a 6th grader at Picocin Middle School. The first week of school went very well, the teachers were very helpful and nice, the virtual experiments went very well, no glitches of some sort, and I look forward to the rest of the school year.
My first day of school was good, and I'm glad I got to see my friends and my new teachers, and I think that overall this year is going to be good.
Hello, my name is Caleb, I'm from the 8th grade, and the first day of school was great because I got to meet my teachers and hang out with my dogs at the same time.
Hi, my name is Hannah O'Grady, I'm a freshman, and my favorite part about today was meeting my teachers.
The first week of school this year was a little bit more hectic than years past. Online learning is not the easiest thing to understand, but I'm sure it'll just take a little while to get used to. I really enjoyed how Canvas lets you take part in online discussions, so it feels as though we are still somewhat in class. All we need to do now is take our time to adjust to this new experience.
Hi, my name is Kayla, I'm a junior, my first few days of class went pretty well. Canvas is easy to use, I just missed a few assignments at first because they were not on the to-do list on the side, and they were in the teacher's page under assignments, so I did miss a few, but I think I'm glad I figured it out. All the live sessions went really well, I got logged in fine, no troubles there, but the schedule makes sense, it's just something that I'll have to adjust to, but it's pretty easy.
Hey, everyone, my name is Max Smith, and today was my last first day of high school, and if you ask my friends and the rest of my classmates, I think everybody will kind of give the same answer, today started off really well, we had a great senior breakfast and shout-out to everybody who made that possible and who helped out with that, we really appreciate it, that started the day off and gave everybody a great attitude going into the virtual learning, and I think once we get past the learning curve with the Canvas software and once we start to get the hang of things and get into a rhythm, we're going to have a good time and we're going to make the most of what we've got, and I think everybody's really excited, I know I'm really excited to finish out my last high school year strong, so, thank you, guys.
Good, thank you very much, sir. All right, Mr. Freeman, you're up, sir.
I'd like to congratulate, can't even talk.
It's been a while.
So, I'd like to congratulate Ms. Jamie Stagerwald for all of her hard work for the board, thank you, and then just in general, she's such an awesome kid, we need more people like her in the world. I'd like to thank our IT/tech department, they are very good at what they do, fixing problems that arise, and please, as been mentioned by Chairman Carter and Mr. Tillit, if you're out there watching us and you have a problem, please report it, email somebody, let's talk, because they can't fix it if they don't know about it. And if you're having a problem, chances are someone else probably is as well. I'd like to thank all the teachers and staff, again, you know, from everything I've heard, it's been a pretty good start to the school year despite being virtual. I'd like to thank Ms. Alba and Dr. Tinsley for speaking tonight, I wish more community members would come and talk to us. I think the community input is outstanding when it's done live, so thank you. And just the parents in general, I know this is new, Ms. Alba shared some things about her students, and my student has experienced some of that same frustration. Please remain patient, we'll get better. That's all I got.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Ingram?
Yeah, too, would like to thank Ms. Stagerwald for everything she's done with the schools and the community as well, and just want to thank the IT department as well, because I had an issue back in March, and come to find out it wasn't a school issue, it was a carrier issue. So, we got that taken care of, and the resolution time was very fast, so hats off to the IT department. I want to thank the parents for coming out and, you know, voicing their opinions and just allowing us to get an understanding of how their child is behaving during all of this time, and just want to thank all the, the, uh...
School Board Office and all the principals and teachers for a good first day and positive first day. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wald.
Just kudos to our parents, our grandparents, our aunts, uncles, it's been an all-hands-on-deck effort with so many families having to work in dual households with still-working parents, and brought up tonight at the podium, the challenges that come with dual-working, you know, parents and the struggles and the conference calls that they're on, and I know from my wife last Friday, you know, keeping my kindergartner in his chair for the duration of the virtual learning period was a huge success for us and our household, so, you know, there's, it's a difficult and challenging time, you know, I feel for the seniors, you know, I remember, you know, some of my, you know, best high school experiences were my senior year, homecoming, senior prom, so looking back on that, you know, I hope that there comes a time this year that they'll get to experience some of those things, because it's tough to lose those, and, you know, when you're 17, 18 years old, you know, you know your future's ahead of you, but you're here today, so not having those experiences and missing out on some of those is challenging. To our teachers that are battling, still learning the Canvas platform management, a lot of folks are spending a lot of extra time behind the scenes, working countless hours, nights, weekends, there's many a teacher going in on Saturdays and even Sundays to spend extra time for preparation, you know, thank you to our teachers, our staff, our administration, and that's really all I have this afternoon.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Holcomb? I would say to Ms. Stagerwald and Mr. Pappas, not coming here from work to start crying, but thank you for the comments, they're very, very good. I was ever going, my lord, very well-spoken, thank you for those words, I think it really helps us see what we've been going through and the miracle of what we're accomplishing now. Last time I was here, it was a couple months ago, I missed last month, but I think I said at that meeting that what we're doing is, Mr. Tillit, it's trend-setting, and no other school district I know is in class right now in classrooms at all, I think, and it's changed, here's one other, okay? We're doing some good stuff here, I think, on the kind of cutting edge, and I'm happy we're going the 4th and 5th pretty quickly here. I know you've got an aggressive plan by Christmas, I'm going to hold you to that if we can get there. I also wanted to bring some attention to the miracle I saw on, I saw it on video, must be true, of kindergartners and first graders walking six feet apart in military fashion into school, that's very good, good job. So, that has a lot to do with you principals and teachers out there doing amazing jobs, a herd and cats, so thank you so much for all you do.
You said it.
Russell, you're up. I took her notes, I apologize.
You did, absolutely. Jamie, thank you for everything, you were absolutely wonderful, I'm sure you'll do amazing and college will be amazing. Thank you very much for community members who spoke tonight, I completely agree with what everybody else said, it's great to have people speak up, hearing them going through many of those same situations right now, in fact, Horizon called me back while I was at this meeting. Steve, you nailed it, we have an amazing team, I think we all know that now more than ever, so thank you, I don't want to keep them, but thank you all for everything that you're doing.
I really appreciated Jamie's inspirational reading, recognizing her fellow students as part of a generation of resilience, very good phrase, thank you. Also, special thanks to Mr. Pappas for his moving commendation of all the small but mighty staff who have pulled together to make the start of our 2020 school year such a success, thank you so much.
Santa Claus has to get toys every... Thousands of elves helping him, by comparison, I don't think he has anything on y'all and what y'all accomplish. Y'all are amazing, every time I think I've heard the apex of what you accomplish is Trump the next week or the next month, and I don't know how you do it, but I know that everybody thanks y'all, and everybody recognizes that, so just, I hope you don't have to work that hard very much longer, but keep up the good work, keep up the good work. And there are going to be the inevitable glitches and growing pains with virtual learning. The very first day, and this is back at the beginning of the year, the very first time I taught a class virtually, somebody, and I'm at home with no IT support other than the phone, somebody back on site deleted my entire class, right, the whole class, just poof. You know, what do you do? Oh, my gosh. So, but, the teamwork that was displayed back on site to get me back up and running the entire class in 15 minutes was amazing, and that's, I believe, very characteristic of how y'all operate as well. So, thank you very much to all of your work, and Jamie, you did an amazing job, and I wish you the best of luck on behalf of the board, I know that you will just go on to do great things, so, nice job, parents, very nice job. Do we have material for board review?
No, sir.
She was thinking about it. Who worries? I'm like, who's she looking to for material for board review? Because it might be important that, to let the individuals who spoke and public comment know that you're taking this seriously and what you do when you hear that information. Oh, absolutely, absolutely. We do take notes and there is follow-up, so we always encourage questions and the public comments, so thank y'all very much. Thank you, sir. With that, we will adjourn, y'all have a safe night.